If you'd all rise, if you're able to, for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the agenda. Any new residents that have not attended a town meeting yet? Would you like to stand up and introduce yourself?
I'm June Alphazius and I live on Madison Street.
June?
Yeah, hurry, June.
I'm June Alphazius and I live on Madison Street.
Welcome.
Hi, my name's Carol Walz and I live on Morris.
Welcome, Carol. Another Carol. Anyone else?
Arthur Collins, I live on Morris. I've been here three years, but this is my first meeting.
Oh, welcome. Call. You must have heard the good food that we serve here, huh? Okay, as far as houses go, we have two that were sold last month, but, ooh, eight pending. My goodness. The HOPA survey, other than putting the stickers on the folders, is complete. The CAFE insurance was updated to more realistic amounts for today's world. The Resa ramp was repaired, the park bathrooms were cleaned and painted, and thank you, Maryland, for your great job. New shrubs in front of the community hall. New tables in the auditorium, sorry. We came in here yesterday, thought we could just rearrange some things, and we have to do all the setup. So I'm going to ask people, if you come in here and you rearrange the furniture, please put it back the way you found it. We would have had tables here, but we didn't have enough help at the time, so... Oh, the old lake bridge, still sitting there. I'm not going to go through all of these. I'll be happy to share that whole after I'm through here. Work in progress. Updating signs at the lake. We're still trying to get ahold of the county to finish grading. They're gonna have to start over with the alleyways because the other ones that they did are broke down now. And we've got a couple people working on the few scheduled for the Resa buildings. Bylaws, oh, and people who are in violation of our bylaws, they will be getting letters in the mail within this next month. You probably don't want one in the mail if you're one of the violators, but there may be a delay just because of the changeover in the board. I'm going to ask if anybody from any of the committees has something to report, to please raise your hand and we'll get the microphone over to you. The concern that I have is that we do have some hefty things on the agenda, so I want to make sure we get through it. Committee reports.
Are you pointing at me? Hello, I'm Liz Church and I'm gonna report on the beautification committee. Just last year was a great year. This year has been, since I've been here, it's been wonderful. We've had a lot of people really involved in the committee and we're working on some really exciting things for next year. We've got our bingo coming up on Saturday. We hope you all will come. We've got wonderful prizes and some raffle prizes. And it's at 5:00, so if you come, it's a potluck and then a short social club meeting and then the bingo. And so we're looking forward to having a lot of fun at that. One of the things that we are working on for 2024 is to have a plant sale around the April garage sale to coincide with that, and that's why we've been asking for all those envelopes. So that'll be part of the project. I would like to thank the members of the committee, Monique, Libby, David, Bee, Cheryl, Ruth, and Jolly Ann. If you're here, can you stand up? So everybody can see your shining face? Oh, come on! Thank you very much, that's all.
Next committee report?
The Lake Committee?
Oh, damn.
I'm getting ready to fly away with the geese here in a couple weeks. And so, yeah, thank you, Russ. And I just want to thank everyone that donated money this year and also anyone that worked on our committee, that worked down at the lake. I think we can all see the improvement there. And Linda Munson, I'm gonna turn this over to now, will be doing the reports while I'm down south. And tomorrow, we had a crew coming in to do reed eating down at the lake. Cost us nothing. Someone that we found, actually is Mickey West's great-grandson. And he manages people that, if you owe community time, you have to, either they send out a warrant or if you are behind on your child support payments, you have to come out and work. And so we've got those people for, yeah, I heard, it does tell you a story. We've got those people for two days this week coming up and we're gonna work the heck out of them down at the lake.
These are not our criminal people, so please.
Well, I'm gonna go point the, yeah, the last thing I was gonna say. I really wanna say, I'm choking now. I really wanna thank Dan for his commitment, his leadership, and for all of those people who have financially supported the Lake project. Well, a lot of it's unaccounted-for dollars, it's not on the books. And we couldn't have done this without all of you. But especially with Dan's vision of what he'd like to see the lake become. We want to restore the lake to almost as big as it was. If you notice that we have a little mini excavator in there, we were able to reeding about 20 feet along the north side of the lake. That's important to give that area back. We need to continue to do that in the next year. I'll go back after the clock now, okay. Otters, aren't they adorable? Well, I'm sure the Roanoke has gone wild. One of our volunteers got meted by them. They actually buried their teeth out. So when you're there at the lake, you might want to keep your pets leached. I looked it up, I had no idea that they could be little bugs. Yeah, be nasty, but they can. Probably because you have a pup. But a pup can even bury its teeth out for volunteers. So, yeah, in the bay, you all went, "I like you." So anyway, now, if you're not, you've heard rumors about the grass cart? Yes, we are going to get a cart. And what I would like, after I explain to you about the kind of cart that we're getting...
Linda, could you hold the phone right up in front of you?
I'm not loud enough? Really? Okay, anyway, yes, we are getting grass cart. It's a special kind of cart called triploid cart. They're a little different than regular cart. They are only, they're completely sterile, they cannot reproduce. So if you catch one, put it back. What I think that would be kind of fun is they're not expensive. We need about 40 of them, and I think they're gonna be about $12 to $15 apiece. How would you like to sponsor a cart? We'll even name it for you. To tell you what they do, is they will eat the underwater grasses, the algae, the scum. They don't eat, you know, fingerlings, baby fish, or anything, they don't, all they eat, they're vegetarians. So we really do feel that this is a better way to try to get all of that crap out of the way because, as you can see, it's just horrendous in there. Everything we're doing has helped, but it's not getting rid of the live grasses in Milford and things like that. Reese, you've already submitted a permit to get the cart?
I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Okay. Dan says yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it can take, it may take up to six weeks before we find out. There are some rules and regulations that we have to follow. Hopefully, we will have all of that in place and we'll get all of these little fishies. Oh, yeah, catch and release only. We know there are a few new predators, but it turns out they're very adept at avoiding predators, like eagles and hawks and things like that. Oh, dam results. Just real quick, I'm gonna give you the bold points. We have the dam inspected. Our dam is the complete north side and the west side that runs along the creek. A lot of people think that the only part of the dam is what runs along the creek. No, the north side is also the dam. When the guy came, he says, the points were excessive vegetation, needs to be removed, a staff gauge. I'm not even gonna read that one, it's not important. And, oh, okay. Our 1995 operations manual has to be updated. I recently submitted the paperwork, it's quite involved. It'll be, I don't think we have to pay any more, but we have to have an updated maintenance manual because we on the Lake Committee are trying to build a maintenance manual that can be used for future generations so that the lake never puts in conditions that it's been in again. I think that was it. Okay, yeah, that's it on that one. Okay, and I'm almost done.
I'll get them, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, he covered that. Oh! We would like to have a Lake Committee meeting in the first of October, which will get into the reporter so that everybody knows because this time, we would like to have all of you participate. I think that a lot of you can bring in some good information and ideas. Yes, ma'am? Yes, go.
Yeah, when I was on the board for a short time last year, I remember reading through the paperwork to do with the dam and the maintenance of the dam and all that. And one portion of it says that in order to keep the dam viable so that it does not weaken and fail over time, you're not supposed to have any trees growing out of it. Does that mean at some point that any trees, no matter how big or small they are, have to be removed from the dam so that we keep the dam viable from failure?
I talked with the engineers when they came out, and of course, we walked down the dam and we had those four-foot fir trees growing out of there. We talked about, do we have to take those out or not? He suggested that we don't because you're gonna leave the stump and the stump's gonna deteriorate, rot down, and inherit the dam.
And one more, that reminded me. The dam inspectors noticed that we have a lot of too much holes in all along where you all walk. And we have noticed a lot of open too much holes. They think we should track whatever critter it is. And, hey, I'm going, I don't think we know how to do that because they don't even know what kind of critter makes those holes, but there is a lot of...
A drill bit.
Okay, that's it for me.
I want to add one thing to the Lake Committee. Linda and I are in the process of having an Italian spaghetti night to raise funds for the lake. We're going to have a spaghetti feed with bingo following. And since the beautification is doing this month, we're gonna wait until November and do it. But it'll be a big spaghetti feed with all the trimmings. Okay, hold on. Got more?
Just want to let the crowd know that...
No, wait a minute, you're not last.
Just want the crowd to know that the scientific food for otters is grass cart.
Are you kidding? Oh, he said the scientific food for otters is grass cart. Well, but she also said they were quick to get away. Library Committee?
First of all, on a personal note, I would like to thank the Angel Ministries for taking care of Doug and I when he was down after a surgery. We really did appreciate that. And for the library, I would like to thank Monique for coming in and helping us, volunteered to come and give us a hand getting things out on the shelf. I appreciate your services, I really did appreciate that. And we have added games to our shelves, so if people have family coming in and want to come get a game, if they just happen to come in after 5:00, give us a call. I will gladly come and let you come and get a game. I have them shelved. We got a lot of good ones in there. So just let us know, or we are open from 10 till 5, so just let us know.
And thank you for all you do. Thank you. Any other committee reports? I didn't see you, Marilyn, I'm sorry.
Want me to just start? Can you hear me? Now you can hear me. Okay, first of all, the garage sale. The garage sale, well, a lot of people had a difficult time with it. We met our goal. In fact, we exceeded it, not by much, but by some. And in fact, $1,700 of the amount we earned went into the building fund, which means we are only about $1,400 from our goal of $8,000 to get all of the electrical work done. And hopefully good. And co-hosting with Norm, with John Sullivan, was really, that was outstanding. There weren't many in attendance, but John is quite the storyteller. And we hope in the future that any of the old timers that come into town, we would love to co-host with them because I think it went over very well. And we will be voting for a new board next month, so we're hoping everybody will attend and make their known, your choices known. And we are having a meeting tomorrow at 1:00, which will be a potluck. So please come and share your ideas of what we can do in the future. Thank you. Firewise, can you hear? Firewise, we have exciting stuff going on in the next month.
Let me have a quiet piece.
It still happens.
Gail, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now, Carol? Can you hear me now, Doug? Will I have to swallow the microphone then? Okay. Excitement for next month. It's time for our Fall Firewise Expo. October the 1st, which is a Sunday, 1:00 in the cafe, 1:00 in the afternoon till 3:00 in the afternoon. 1:30, we plan to have a fire extinguisher demonstration. All that stuff all over. If you have a non-working fire extinguisher that you'd like to donate, we'd like to play with it. If you're engaged, for example, and it says it's not good, let's see if it is. We will also have fire extinguishers, and I've been asked for smoke alarms to raffle up and to sell. We'll sell some at our cost and we'll raffle the others off. Yeah, that is October 1st. The fall cleanup is Saturday, October 14th. Gather your brush trimmings and your tree trimmings, cut them to no more than four feet length with the cut-ins in a pile in the alley behind your house during the week of October 8th to 14th. Don't bag your sticks. Our volunteers will go through town and pick up those sticks. If you'd like to volunteer to help with this part of our cleanup, see Bob Havel. We hope to be able to help a couple of homeowners with their cleanup this year. If you have a neighbor or you need help getting your bushes trimmed, just can't do it, there will be a sign-up sheet at the expo and one for those who want to help with that on October 14th. And it will be in the committee hall after October 1st. We gratefully accept donations. Cost of getting the sticks out of town isn't cheap. Firewise is not a Resa auction. Resa has agreed to accept donations for us. Your Resa dues do not pay anything to Firewise. Please make your checks payable to Ridgewood Volunteer Fire Department Auxiliary. Put your donations in the envelope, mark it Firewise, drop it by the office. Or you can bring cash or checks, buy at the expo, and I'll be glad to take them. For those who don't know, Calhoun County will be picking up leaves this fall, as they always do, if they're right to the front of your property sometime in late October or November.
Gail, what?
Karen?
I really don't need this, unless you all know. Anyway, look at you guys, y'all smiling. Here we go. Long time no see. But anyway, the pace going good, we had sent Ty in and I went to all the buildings and they did all the fire inspections with the fire extinguishers. Of course, they walked through the building and they looked at the little new $7,000 for those sprinklers. They go, "I don't see any leaks." I said, "No, there better not be." But anyway, so everything went good and it passed and dinners are going good and we're having a lot of fun and keeping the money up. I see I'm in the black, so that's even better, so. And it's been good, so thank you. Okay, Angel Ministry met today. I'll do that real quick, hold on. And it went really well, and we talked about all the people that are asking for help, one way or the other, and it's been really good. And we keep growing and people are enjoying it. So it's a lot of work, but we keep everybody as happy as possible. Okay, thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Yes.
Oh, please.
The social club, I think we need to talk about that. As Liz said, we were gonna sponsor the bingo for beautification on the 16th, which is our regular night to meet with the social club. And 5:00 potluck. And I imagine we'll have a small meeting anyway. And then September 30th, we're gonna have a Oktoberfest at the park. So we'll have music and dancing and the usual hot dogs. They're a little cheaper than the hamburgers and they work better than the burgers, so. Oh, I don't know, I don't know if anybody has leader hoses, do they? Anybody have leader hoses? I had a pair once, but I don't know what happened to them, so. Anyway, that's for September for the social club. Thank you.
Anyone?
Okay, what I was curious about, and it was to the man of the lake.
Dan.
Dan, okay. We got this from our last meeting and it had everything except you said that we replaced three cords, I believe it gone, and it wasn't, they weren't cut on purpose? The cords, they were not cut on purpose, but we had to replace them. And it wasn't on this paper that we got at our last meeting, the price? So we don't know what that whole cord was. So you have to add $2,600 to this paper then, because it isn't on here. No, but there's no date on it either, so. And you mentioned it, so I was curious, because I never saw it on the paper. I don't know if they were vandalized or not, you have to ask the experts. So they were vandalized then, okay. And we don't need any vandalization because that's a lot of money, guys. Yeah, I knew that. But I think we do need the cameras, thank you. Okay, four of them. I'll give this back to you, but I was curious because it wasn't on my paper.
Anyone else? Well, in case you don't know, today's my last day and I am so excited. And I want to take a minute and say thank you to this board. Don't let me go, say. I have had a lot of fun, we have had a lot of fun. We've definitely learned a lot. We've made mistakes, but I don't think it hurt anybody in town that we made those mistakes. And you learn from it. I mean, if life didn't have mistakes, where would we be? So I really want to thank the board and I'm welcome Doug back after his knee surgery. And so I just wanted to say thank you. There are so many people in this town and I started to make a list of everybody that I needed to, you know, stop and say thank you to, you know, Dan, the Bob Havel, the Larry Gone. You know, there are just so many. And I can't thank you enough for all your support through the last three years. It hasn't been easy at times, but I should thank you. Thank you all so much. I appreciate it. Okay, now we know. Besides the food, let's go to our outcome of our voting. Is there any questions before I go into this right off the bat? Okay? Here we go. There were 240 ballots were delivered. 164 were returned and wow, only one invalid. That was amazing. So .679 valid returns. So we more than met that. All right, here we go, folks. Here are the results, for those that can't see it. Len Cornwell, 26. Jerry Edgar, 26. These are votes, these are not percentages. Ella, 77. David March, 87. Sharon Mathina, 87. Sharon Mathina, 114. And Meredith, 137 votes. So your new board members, David March, Sharon Mathina, and Meredith. You know Meredith's last name, I don't hate to say that. And I think that's it. So now the next step for the board is they will meet within five days, get together, they'll set up the meeting. What I'd like to do for the new board is ask you to come up here so that that meeting can be arranged and set. And then they will go into a session and decide the office that each person will hold. So that's how our bylaws read and that's what'll happen. Any questions at all in the process? I want to thank the counters. Help me here. Meredith, uh, no, not Meredith, Sheila. Meredith's didn't count. Monique, Violet, and John Begoy. Thank you all. And if you have any questions about the, you know, was there any, you know, stuff going on in there? Ask one of those people and they'll all tell you. And anybody who's counted out before can tell you. There's nothing that goes on, you know, that shouldn't go on. So I just want to make that very clear. Okay. What else do we have? Oh, dealer tickets. Ben Carroll, yes, absolutely. Stand up. Thank you. Okay, so this board worked so hard and not always did we agree, but we sure came out ahead and we sure did the right thing and we all went along. So that's what counts. Nobody stomped out of the room and took their toys in my home or anything like that.
I'm really glad I did this. You'll learn a lot. You learn new faces. And it's not an easy job, because we're trying to fix things that, um, bylaws are violating. And it's not easy sometimes, but we've got to have the board. If you don't, we're gonna be Camelot Court number two. And you all know that. So we have, we have been given the opportunity and the privilege to live here. Take care of this place. It's important to all of us, because our, what, morality, ethics from us old people are thinning out. So let's keep this place how it was meant to be. Thank you.
Um, this is really kind of hard for me. I've been on this board for seven years and I feel like it's a part of me. In a way, I'm relieved that it's over, but I'm really, really having kind of withdrawals, I think. I love this town and I know I'm getting old. I'm 86 years old and I, I am looking forward to moving into a new apartment eventually. I have to be closer to things. My boys feel that I need to be somewhere that's closer. It's a hard decision for me to make and I'm leaving it up to God. If he opens the door, he will. If he doesn't want me to move, he will keep the door closed. But if I move, you know I all love every one of you and I will never, ever, ever forget any of you. It's been a pleasure of being on the board. And each president that I've been under, we've had our challenges, but we've also had some real successes. And I feel that we have done what Riderwood needs and I know that the new board will continue that and carry it on for the rest of us. Thank you.
Um, I hope, did we run out of the financial reports too? Okay. The financial report year-to-date will be in the October reporter. So if we ran out and you didn't get one, you'll see it in the October reporter. Sorry Sheila, but we got a lot of pages coming your way. Okay, here we go. First drawing. All right, a new person! After the meeting, you want to come up and she'll put your name on it. Okay, one more? Well, I had a nettle there, did we? Okay, we'll have your ticket for you at the end of the meeting. I want to ask, are there any questions, comments? Yes? Gail? He's asking that everybody obey his speed limit. Unfortunately, and I'm just gonna say this, one of the biggest offenders, two of the biggest offenders don't attend this meeting. Here, Gail.
Well, that's what I don't have got to say, but, uh, we could get Kellis County in here and set up a radar and put a stain on it a few times. That's one down. And another thing about it, people are going into the intersections. I walk my dog a lot. They don't look either direction, they just ride through. Somebody is gonna get hurt. So let's just pay attention to what we're doing.
Let your family members know, please. I've seen so many, I live by a horse. I've been here three years. And I do a lot of yard work and I see more young people, your relations, start right down here and zoom right through town. And I yell, "Slow it down, knock it off." And I made a comment to one of the young fellows yesterday after getting the mail. And he confronted me, telling me that he was driving 25. That young man was driving anywhere between 30 and 35. And one of these days, your precious pet is going to get hit. Your grandchild is gonna get hit. Deer, raccoon, somebody's gonna get hurt. And then where are we gonna be? I'm, I'm seriously looking into getting a radar gun and I'm gonna start nailing people. And if the county sheriff wants a place to sit, come sit in my driveway, because I'm more than willing to let you have it.
Everybody, a lot of people here don't seem to think that the first two, three blocks are not part of Riderwood.
That's right.
You come right through there, sometimes doing 40, 45, maybe even more. You get between fifth and fourth and then you slow down to 25 miles an hour.
I'm sorry, I'm past 6. I'm, I'm turning onto 6 and I get taxed.
Yeah. And everybody comes out there, they forget that we are part of Riderwood also. Thank you.
I, I live on Taylor and I have noticed that the people that come to service our heating or roofing or you name it, they are not abiding by the 25 or lower either. And I think that needs to be reminded for the businesses that come in and help us. And I appreciate all the businesses that do come into town, but they are somewhat going faster, especially down Second. And I, I love that turnaround with the county sign-ins. I get to see a lot of that turnaround right there. A lot of people coming in early and sitting outside Matt and Tammy's place and Barbara and Doug's place and my place. And I get worried, what are they looking for? What are they doing there that early? And it's my question about that, because I worry about us. Why are they on Second? And what are they doing? Previewing ways to get out of town, places to go see? I don't know. But I really am concerned about that aspect, safety. Yes?
It is hunting season, so beware of the hunters coming in and checking out our deer. Because they do come and they push them out of town. We watched it happen last year and they shoot them as soon as they get out of town. So just beware, the hunters are coming.
If you see suspicious activity around your house, 11, 2, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the morning, call the sheriff's department. County is responsible for that. Neighborhood watch, all we can do is observe what's going on. We are not allowed to make contact with these people. It's dangerous for the team. We're all eyes and ears. So if you see something suspicious around your house, call 911 and report. That come out of the neighborhood watch meeting this last two weeks ago. So please, you see something suspicious at all, 911 is your call. Then you can call us. We can come and be your eyes and ears. That'll definitely help the police to have witnesses, license plate numbers, whatever we can get for information purposes. Thank you.
I want to make one more comment too. The other day, and I know that there's been a message put out about this, but the other day, there were probably five or six kids on a golf cart going down Second Street, loaded. And that little girl driving that car, I'm sorry, if she was 10, that was probably old enough. I mean, they have to have a driver's license, folks. Don't let them drive without, if they're not old enough. Can you imagine somebody speeding down Monroe is where this was? And that, those little kids going across that Second Street there, crossing Monroe and a car coming and not stopping? That would have been a huge disaster. Watch those grandkids, nieces, nephews, I don't care who they are, if they don't have a driver's license, they don't belong on the golf cart.
Lot of bicycles, a lot of walkers in town as well. Be careful, okay? Anybody else? Comments, concerns? Yes?
Is the county responsible for cleaning up that tree that fell over on, um...
What is it?
Monroe.
Yeah, Sixth and Monroe. Is the county responsible about it or is it just they were at that? Is it impeding the roading?
It, it got cleaned up and off the road.
Not anymore. So a couple of us moved in.
Call RISA when it happens, that's...
Oh, I was just wondering.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not 100% sure. And I'll be soon.
I believe that right now, the tree is on private property. It belongs to somebody else. So the finish of cleanup, it was on their property. So they're responsible for trees that are not fit. Once they hit the road, it's probably RISA's responsibility, because it's our road or a county road.
Joyce wants to know what's happening with the house that burned.
Good question. We got a, uh, we do have, the fire report just came in the other day. I haven't been able to download it yet, but they say it's there. And we have sent a report into the county. We found out from our attorney that the county is responsible for doing the cleanup of those houses. So that's what I can tell you at this point. I mean, there is some personal things going on that we can't tell you, but we do, we have sent in the report to the county for the abatement and cleanup. Yes?
What's the status on the South Bridge? The one on that side?
That's the one that's still...
Yeah.
Waiting.
Waiting for...
Waiting, waiting, waiting.
What's it waiting for?
I don't know what it's, I don't know what's going to happen with that, because somebody said right from the get-go that that bridge, when it was built, had a sag in it. I mean, it was built that way. I'd like to just take the board down and be done with it, but I don't know that that would be the safest thing to do, so. Susan?
Did you say that the county is responsible for the cleanup of the burned house?
Yes.
So is that only this case? Or is that any house that burns?
The county, they have a county code that says that they are responsible for taking care of it. Now, I don't know the circumstances of why they're responsible, but they do know that that person did not have insurance. The house is a total loss. There was damage done to the neighboring garage. So they know all that. That was all given in the report. I gave them like nine issues that had to do with that house, so. Okay? Anything, anybody. Thank you all again. It's been a pleasure. Oh, next meeting, October 10th, 10 a.m. And we're going to have a visitor, our fire marshal. Is that right, fire marshal? Will be here as well as the gal from United Healthcare. Son has asked me to announce that anyone who would like to play ping pong.
I'm looking for someone who can beat me.
She needs a new challenge.